All right, good evening. It's 6:00 PM, Tuesday, July 25th. Called the city council meeting to order, acknowledged that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me if you're able for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the day and the beauty of it. Thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve this great community, help us to stay focused on the greater good and have our conversations be treated with respect and civility tonight and just guide the conversations and decisions that we need to make. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole, roll call.
Councilmember Gosian is on Zoom. Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Streetman.
Here.
Councilmember Popson. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item, citizens' comments.
Randy Bell.
Hello, again, thank you. So this morning's televised news report stated that IOP plans to discuss the timing of a special election concerning the limitations on STRs. For clarity, this council majority's failure to address the resident concerns removed that option. South Carolina law is clear. Section 51730 states that council may, in its discretion, and if no regular election is to be held within such period, provide for a special election. We have a November scheduled election. In any attempt to circumvent that election, an attached referendum will be met with serious resident objections. Our residents will not allow for blatant suppression. Addressing the residents' concerns, council on a 5-4 vote on February 28th opted to monitor and not allow further council debate. Thus dismissing resident concerns that the number of licenses will increase as IOP remains the only local community failing to address the short-term rental issue limitations. Additionally, the petitioned ordinance could have been passed for second reading at the last council meeting, giving this council the opportunity to amend and void a referendum vote. Councilmember Hans' public assertion that residents only wanted limits that apply to single-family structure fails to mention council's failure to address IOP business licensing requirements for the commercial district. The commercially-zoned front beach structures could have been modified by council. Just another example of the leadership failure to properly debate, discuss, and amend to avoid a mandated referendum. So here we are, with residents acting in the only manner available to address this failure. The above facts are central to November's general election and will most likely cost incumbents their seat on council. The Charleston County Board of Elections certified 1,173 petition signatures with a 94% accuracy rate. We now have the math exercise. The board stopped counting signatures at 935 votes, yielding 876, exceeding the required 683. Extrapolating the 94%, we would have over 1,100 certified votes. So incumbents Ward, Streetman, and Popson, if debating whether to run or not, should recognize that with past history as a guide, we'll have 1,200 to 1,500 votes in this election. And not one incumbent received over 800 votes in the last election. So, you know, this is going to be a difficult election and probably divisive for this community, but I think the public has spoken very loudly on this issue, and we still would like for council to pay attention and listen to what the residents are telling them. So we should expect a high turnout. So if one council member stated on hot mic, "What's wrong with these people?" The question is, "What's wrong with the majority of council at this point?" Thank you.
Terry Hack.
Good evening. My name is Terry Hack, and I represent the owners of Wild Dunes Resort. Thank you for your continued dedication to the important issues facing this community. I'd like to restate a couple of comments for your consideration as you review the STR cap and the potential of a petition or the petition, pardon me. Short-term rentals have been part of the fabric of Isle of Palms for more than 50 years. We understand and empathize with permanent residents. Yet, second homeowners, STR owners, and commercial operators of condo hotels have no representation in the matter of this petition before you. We believe that's unfair. The petition's language favors permanent residents and strips away the legal rights of all other property owners. We strongly oppose a cap on short-term rentals unless... The council carves out the existing condo hotels on Front Beach and the residence at Sweetgrass. The accommodations taxes from these condo hotels make up the majority of the city's ATAX revenue and is a critical revenue source for this city. The residence at Sweetgrass amount to a very large portion of the island's room inventory to accommodate overnight groups, which contribute a significant portion of these ATAXes. In addition, the hospitality taxes are quite significant. We strongly encourage the proponents of the petition to seek a compromise for the good of the community. I also, if I may, would like to share a quick update on the sound engineering study. The final study was conducted at Wild Dunes over the weekend, and we will deliver an executive summary to the Public Safety Committee next week, August 1st, at their meeting. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Hack, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to get the entire report instead of just the executive summary so that we can actually take a look at what the results of the study were? My concern, and I think this was voiced at the last meeting, is that the executive summary, we've all written them, seen them, and reviewed them before, are not necessarily giving us the ability to really dive into the results of the study.
Yes, thank you. I have asked our ownership group that same question. I think that another council member asked that question at the last meeting, and we do have a meeting about that on Thursday, and so I will then voice that to them as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Claus.
Dow Claus, Three Grand Pavilion, 17th presentation since April 13th of '22. Requesting for the 11th time to provide us with written assurances regarding enforcement of Section 925 B and C, amplified music is unlawful and the core of the very nuisance which has been created. Reviewing Mrs. Anderson's letter dated June 16th of '23 to the South Carolina Ethics Commission containing, quote, "relevant information," unquote, regarding her explanation on conflicts of interest when addressing the noise ordinance. We found material facts not disclosed to the Ethics Commission. We believe the missing material facts will alter the informal opinion, unquote, previously issued by said commission. What are the missing material facts? Public safety meeting, April 13th of '22, when asked, "What can you do to help us?" Mrs. Anderson, chairperson, responded, "We will get back to you." Mrs. Anderson was negligent in never contacting us. Email to Mayor Pounds and council dated June 12, '23. Quote, "We contend Mrs. Anderson has a conflict of interest regarding the proposed noise ordinance as it relates to the resort and the Wild Dunes Community Association. As you are aware, Mrs. Anderson's spouse, Mr. Jim Anderson, is the current president of Wild Dunes Community Association. Mrs. Terry Hack, senior VP and a shareholder of Lo, is a Wild Dunes Community Association board member controlling 20% of the voting rights. On March 4th of '23, Debbie Stanley, then presiding president of Wild Dunes Community Association, publicly acknowledged they have no fiduciary or moral obligation to help us, the Clauses, regarding the resort's noise violations, carving us out of their empire. Mrs. Anderson, we respectfully request you readdress this issue to the Ethics Commission disclosing the above additional material facts. Actually, Mrs. Anderson, your lack of disclosure and transparency validates our case. June 30, '23, I called the Isle Police regarding an amplified ban at the Sweetgrass. Inquiring about disposition of the call, Chief Cornet responded, "It was a, quote, 'founded complaint, no ticket issued,' unquote. So I ask you, how in the hell can we not issue a ticket to an habitual offender of the noise ordinance? This administration needs to quit focusing on wearing white hats. We need to quit worrying about a noise ordinance violation being heard by the South Carolina Supreme Court." On July 21st of '23, we emailed all of you a video dated May 22nd, 2018, validating former city council member Randy Bell's comments at our June 27, '23 city council meeting.
Mr. Claus.
A picture is worth a thousand words. The resort told the council exactly what they wanted to hear. What is the reason the resort did not honor their commitment? Where is the accountability? Based on the resort's sins of the past, how can we rely on their commitments in the future? Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Mr. Claus. Ed Fitzpatrick.
Hello, I'm Ed Fitzpatrick. My wife and I are the owners of the second home at 15 Ocean Point. I am also an experienced litigation attorney with over 40 years' experience representing clients in complex civil litigation. I'm here today because of my concern about the council's handling of the pending litigation brought by the Wild Dunes Resort in their attempt to invalidate lawfully passed zoning ordinances. The resort's argument is that it has a veto right over the Isle of Palms zoning authority because the resort is, quote, "the successor," unquote, to the original developer of the Wild Dunes, and that that original developer submitted a zoning application to establish a planned residential development known as a PRD. And that zoning application is, under the resort's theory, a, quote, "contract," unquote, which Isle of Palms breached by enacting zoning ordinances. I have reviewed the court filings, and I note that you've retained an experienced attorneys who have correctly denied that the 1975 PRD is a contract, and they have raised multiple affirmative defenses to the resort's claim. In my view, IOP has a winner here. My concern is that you will settle the lawsuit in such a way as to set a bad precedent for future zoning disputes and give the resort rights which no other IOP property owner has. The resort clearly threatened the filing of this lawsuit and the resulting legal expense in an attempt to get leverage in the zoning negotiations. You should not give in to that threat. My concern about a premature settlement by this council is reinforced by what has happened in which other councils have negotiated with the resort. In the 2016 PRD amendment, somebody missed the fact that the resort slipped into the amendment the word "contract" rather than "zoning ordinance." And in the 2018 negotiations regarding the Sweetgrass Inn, the council failed to include any requirements to guarantee that the resort would comply... Excuse me.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, are you nearly done?
Yes, just about. The requirements that the resort verbally represented that they would comply with noise, parking, and traffic issues, but there's nothing in that approval which guaranteed compliance by the resort. And in fact, as we've seen, they had not complied with those representations that they made. In short, let your attorneys do their job. You've got a winner. Don't give the resort any different rights than any other property owner in this city. Thank you.
That's all.
That is it? Thank you. Next item, special presentations. We don't have any. Next item, approval of previous meeting's minutes. City council meeting, June 27th, 2023. Special city council workshop on July 11th, '23. Special city council meeting executive session on July 11th. Special city council meeting STR cap petition on July 11th. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, any edits, changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Old Business, Presentation in Consideration of Fiscal '24 Carta Budget. Andrea, thank you for joining us.
Good evening. My name's Andrea Kozlowski. I'm the deputy director of operations and support with Carta. I'm here this evening to do our annual presentation of the Carta budget. As you are aware, the budget is on a fiscal calendar, so it's from October 1st to September 30th. We do have to present to many different organizations and municipalities, so that's why we get started kind of early in the year to make sure we get it all done in time. There was a cover sheet attached to the actual budget that kind of spelled out all the changes, additions, corrections, that sort of thing to the expenditures and the revenues. So I won't go into much detail about that. I will just let you know that the budget will change due to the fact that we were recently notified that we did receive a $26 million discretionary grant to purchase seven additional electric buses and to replace the Carta Superstop, which is on Rivers Avenue in Cosgrove. So that facility will be constructed on the Teddy Pryor campus, right down the street from where we currently are. So that'll be a huge improvement to our system and a great amenity to our riders. So as we get that project underway, we'll have to add those funds to the budget. We haven't received the grant fund just yet, so they're not in this current budget, but it will be amended as we go. The other big thing is there's a $300,000 increase in capital for operations included in the budget, as well as $5 million for the Mount Pleasant Street Park and Ride facility that we will be building next to Joseph Floyd Manor. That will be part of the Low Country Rapid Transit Project, but also a standalone park and ride lot until we get the LCRT built. We did switch contractors, so National Express is our new contractor. Things are going well. Service has increased and has been pretty steady and stable with the new contractor. They have done a lot of hiring events to try to get more operators in the seats so that we can ensure that our riders are arriving where they need to be on time. The Beach Reach, as you know, is in its third year. Service to that runs on an hourly basis, or as much as traffic will allow us to. It's just a circulator, so it just runs as it can. We've already exceeded last year's numbers. We have had 475 riders this year so far. The first year, we had 482, so we have no doubt that we will exceed that as well. So we did a lot of marketing campaigns for it. We did with Channel 4, the Low Country Living Local segment, did an explanation. She rode around and showed people where to get on at Town Center and where it drops you off here at Beach Walker Park. We also did a lot of social media campaigns with contests. One will be launched this weekend. County Park donated a gold pass to us, so that will be given away this weekend. So we feel like that's helped a lot of ridership, is just engaging people and teaching them. We've partnered with all the hotels in Mount Pleasant Town Center, so we feel like that service has been beneficial. Hopefully, you've seen a decrease in traffic on the weekends to the beach, and parking has gotten better, but it will continue the marketing of that service. It runs through Labor Day, so we'll continue those efforts to try to get cars off the road and people on the bus. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Are you doing any sort of survey of the ridership, you know, the ones that are currently utilizing the service? Are you asking them at a later time to weigh in as to what they liked, what they didn't like, what could be done better?
We do. We have onboard surveys that we do for folks. We've actually had some people ride the Beach Reach Shuttle on the weekends and just talk to people and figure out why they're using it now and what has increased. And a lot of it is the tourists staying in the hotels. The hotels now have big signs in the lobbies letting them know that it's a free service, where to park, and how frequently it runs, so that's been a huge help. We did recently, on July 10th, launch the new rebrand of Carta. So we'll be actively going out and doing onboard rider surveys as well as online surveys to get people's opinions on that. We wanted to give our new contractor some time to get boots on the ground and get that service more stable than it has been. So once we get those ridership numbers, probably in August, we will do a launch of a survey campaign.
Okay. Well, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but generally speaking, has the feedback been pretty favorable about the service, or?
Yes, it has, especially since July 1st. I know that's not very much time, but people have noticed an increase in stability of the service, especially the express riders. We made sure that our new contractor understood that the express riders are dedicated to MUSC College of Charleston, and they need to be on time from all of the park and ride lots. So we have gotten some great feedback from them. We haven't really done a whole lot of onboard surveying of like the Route 10 and 12 on Rivers Avenue just yet. We wanted to give the brand time to settle in and then give the new contractor time to get fully staffed and get that service up and running.
Okay, thank you.
Jane.
One quick one. I understood that there were some questions about the feasibility of the route that was being taken before. Have you done any adjustments to the route on the island when it goes down Ocean Boulevard in that area?
No, this year we haven't had any problems or complaints or feedback about that, so I think we resolved those issues last year.
Okay, thank you.
Andrea, thank you. We need a motion to approve this budget.
Motion to approve.
Second, any other discussion questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Andrea, thank you. Thanks for coming. I know you're making the rounds all over, so appreciate you doing that. Next item is Presentation of Final Drainage Master Plan by Davis &amp; Floyd. Michael, thank you guys for joining us. This is in your packet with a whole lot of details, so we'll stay high level tonight.
Understood, yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to come for you this evening to represent the wrap-up or the completion of our efforts here for stormwater master planning across the island. We'll touch back on, we took part in the early May meeting. With that, we identified the Phase 4 study area, and we went through some of the results, high-level results at that time, and we entertained a couple of questions. We've made some revisions to that report, and as part of your packet, you'll see that there's a final deliverable now that includes the final report for Phase 4's master plan. I'll touch on some of the improvements that were made to that or advancements. Primarily this evening, I want to spend time on Technical Memorandum Number 1. That is our Task 2 out of our two task contract and scope of services, and that is to leave you with a capital improvement plan. It is, we call it, an island-wide plan for stormwater management, as well as some review of the maintenance operations and make some recommendations towards your current program, as well as a review of your development regulations and some recommendations on top of that. Again, the master plan has been released in final form. Some of the changes that came about were from the comments received at the last meeting where some of the graphics identified or used two different scales. So we've married that up and had the scales be the same, if you will, between pre and post-project conditions. I think that led to some confusion in some of the earlier reads. So that's been updated, as well as, I think there was a comment earlier this evening about executive summary. There was a request for that, so that has been added to the report as well. And then also, you'll find that the recommended projects, Phase 4 projects, have been summarized or ranked in a prioritization that now is consistent with what you'll find here introduced as part of the Technical Memorandum Number 1. That is an island-wide plan. So again, the intent here is to bring a summary. We finished Phase 4. Prior was completed to Phase 3 master plan, and so our task was to leave you with a comprehensive plan now that pulls both of those studies, our work and work by others previously completed, together. So basically, as you see here, it's an assimilation of the results from the Phase 3 study. Some of those projects are underway today, and others are still planned, and our task was to identify a means to bring both those recommendations together for a plan to leave you with. Represented here are 16, I'll call it, programs or project groupings, starting with number one as a project that's already underway, which is the outfalls for Phase 3. You'll see other projects, basically, a study phase is identified there, but that go crossover between both master plans, Phase 3 and Phase 4. It took some effort on our part to get through to this point because the studies were completed and using different methodologies, but our approach to this was to look at the average depth of flooding that we recognize in current conditions, and then the reduction in that flooding after the proposed improvements are made for both Phase 3 master plan work as well as Phase 4. And so that allowed us to develop a quantitative method, if you will, in ranking the projects, and that's what the results here are representing. Obviously, a large price tag at near $50 million total, but this represents what we would recommend as a sequence or prioritization of those projects. And again, this table is Table 1 in your Tech Memo Number 1 packet. The second table is basically the summary of the review of maintenance, ongoing maintenance and operations activities that the city is currently undertaking. We interviewed or discussed, had a meeting with several team members, your team members, that is, and developed this summary table, basically looking at a frequency, a recommended frequency of particular maintenance operations. And so basically, quarterly, annually, after significant events, there's some repetition to what we recommend undertaking. And in addition to that, we've recommended an adopted drain program or something similar to that, and that basically has proven to be effective for several communities we've worked with where it gives an option to property owners and members of the public to take part in recognizing the importance of stormwater features and taking some responsibility for looking over how they exist today and having a mechanism or an opportunity to bring attention to the city where they feel like it needs to be, or take part in actually maintaining those. And then also, we've recommended an online reporting system, and that would bring, again, a quicker connection to and bring opportunities for the public to be engaged in promoting the importance of stormwater management systems and taking part in their upkeep. Table 3 is the final table, the final conclusion set, if you will, from our Tech Memo Number 1 publication, and that is a review of the development regulations. We were asked to look over current regulations and how that ties to stormwater management practices and to look for opportunities for possibly doing away with some that might not provide the benefits that it may have at one point in time, and look for opportunities to make revisions, as well as make opportunity or identify opportunities for making additions to that that might bring meaningful improvements to your, to improve flood resiliency. And quickly, I'll just run through, again, that table is not legible on the screen, but again, the full table is in your document. But we've got several here that look at, for instance, the filling of land. And basically, right now, it looks, you know, adding fill or importation of materials of any type, recontouring a lot, all that's excluded. And basically, we're making a recommendation there to revise the read of that ordinance. And so I'll spare the details in reading it off to you, but that's just one example of the recommendations that are in there, is to make revisions to some of the current ordinances. This is one that were actually relatively simple in that we recommend omitting it from the standpoint of, right now, it states that any decrease in the lot's existing ground elevation is strictly prohibited. We think that's unnecessarily, could be interpreted to and could lead to a challenge in good stormwater management practices where if you need to, if you're increasing elevation of one portion, that it's best, especially if it's an isolated area, to decrease in another area to compensate for that loss in storage. So again, this is a recommendation for entertaining this, and we, you know, we or others could help advise the city in what unintended consequences, if there might be any out there, are entertained. But we see that there are benefits to being able to lower elevations within a lot, for instance, during the development process. Third one here is for, could be relatively simply interpreted, but basically keeping yard litter, for instance, and other debris. yard litter, for instance, and other debris and forms and fashions out of the stormwater system. It's pretty specific when it comes to, you know, not pushing it into streets or sidewalks, but right now, it says, you know, to not impact storm drainage systems, and we think it may be beneficial to specifically mention that it's man-made and natural drainage courses, not just piping and inlets. So, it's something that we see in other communities as well, is a frequent occurrence, is not only homeowners or property owners, but maintenance crews disposing of yard litter or blowing leaves and things like that into drainage systems. So, we, in talking with your team, we understand that that sometimes is a problem, and we think with changing the ordinance and promoting the importance of keeping debris out of those systems would be beneficial overall. And finally, just landing with a land development regulation engineer review, we feel like there could be some benefit, especially in maybe more complicated applications for improvement or redevelopment efforts that the city may want to entertain bringing in or having somebody on contract, really, to do the technical review that is being represented. It seems like there may be some opportunities to work with the team, the city staff, to understand what to look for, and it may not be something that's needed in perpetuity, but getting them started and looking at good stormwater management practices, we feel like would be beneficial. And I spoke too soon. There is one last one here with the best management practices. That seem to be of interest to city team members, is that is to, can we incentivize better practices beyond what the minimum requirements are for permits and development ordinances today? So, we make reference to what exceptions might be out there, but introducing rainwater harvesting, and we feel like especially in a lot of areas for the city of Allo Palms, there's benefit to retaining water on property, and there's a lot of good technology and practices that are available to designers and builders today that we think there should be some means for, to incentivize. So, again, it's not part of the scope of this study to get into the details of it, but we leave it that with a, within several selected parameters, there may be an option for the city to incentivize the application of what we call best management practices or low-impact development technologies beyond, say, previous pavement, to make holistic improvements for the region. Yes?
Quick question. Are these recommendations fairly standard in other municipalities that you've seen as far as appearing ordinances? It looks like these are things that should be done, and that you're recommending highly that we should do these?
Yes. I'll say there's a big movement toward doing them at various paces. Some are having trouble, but getting them passed, for instance, and going beyond normal requirements for permitting by larger jurisdictions, for instance.
Is that a cost matter, or is it a?
It can be a cost matter. That's one debate, is whether or not green technology pays for itself. We feel like, in many cases, it costs more to do it with the low-impact development, but if you put the incentives in there and/or sometimes it sells in itself. But it'd be, I think it's, it would be carried further if there is opportunities to intertwine it into your development regulations.
And would this be something that we probably want to as a council? I don't even know that we need to vote on it, but to assign to our planning commission to vet all of these and come back to us in a certain period of time to consider?
Think that would be a great approach.
Douglas, is that your expectation for these developmental regulations?
Absolutely.
I had a couple.
Thank you.
First, could you back up a couple to the Title Five? This one here, yes. Can you put in there that it's, this is related to stormwater review and drainage review, rather than just make it as general as it is when it gets into?
Yes, absolutely.
So, just add that word. And then, the last comment I have is, it relates to one of the comments that came up earlier on another subject, but that is your executive summary. It's one paragraph long. If we received this as a standalone, as an executive summary, as we're being offered in another project, it wouldn't tell us anything. The executive summary that I see would be something that we can use as a standalone package of a to-do list, basically. And if you could just add in the information that you're presenting today as part of an executive summary, then we would have a list, not only what you did, but the list of projects you're recommending, prioritizing them, and all of the steps that we should take going forward. That would be very helpful to us, I think, going forward. Thank you.
So, Douglas, from your view, other than the planning commission piece, what's the next steps from your thinking? I mean, I know we've got $50 million sitting on the table, and I have a question, Michael, for you around that.
Yeah. So, I would say that the work that Davis and Floyd has done is already very much informed what the Public Works Department is doing in terms of maintenance. I mean, one of their first steps was to just survey the entire system and identify those that had been silted in, those have been covered up. So, that, that product has been really giving them their to-do list up until this point, and I think that going forward, we now have this table that kind of prioritizes the next big, major projects. So, I think that we will need to kind of wrap our heads around how we tackle that project list. The, and one of the, it might be the third thing on the list here is Merritt Boulevard, and the Public Works staff kind of took that initiative and could see that they had a dollar amount that they could work with at the remainder of last year. So, I think there's going to be just some, you know, some prioritizing that we need to do in accordance with what we have available to us and start chipping away at that, that work list.
Can we go back to that slide while you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah. And so, I think that we will kind of internally digest what you all have received and circle back with Davis and Floyd on this hierarchy and try to come up with, with really a realistic capital improvement plan for, and I would hope that the total number wouldn't be what it's calling for in this document, but we can get it to a manageable size that we could see real improvements after, after rain events.
Is this something we could get with our lobbyists to potentially seek some grant money at the state level to, after we get a prioritization, to seek additional funding? And I'm guessing, Davis and you guys have done this before, looking at helping obtain and get grant funding to address some of these?
I mean, there's a whole table that's federal, state, all kind of levels of grants that are out there, and I know some of them, some of them may have expired at this point, given the time that we've been working on this project, but, yeah, this is going to take multiple stickets of money coming in. And I guess, Michael, to some of that question, and I think, Scott, you might have asked this when we looked at this before, but two things, because you're noticing in the report, a number of places where pipes are broken or silted, and I know we're, you know, tackling those as we can. If you cleaned the entire system of what we had, that the current infrastructure, I mean, is there any feel for what might go away? I mean, is the tolerance level get much better, and some of these projects would come off the table, or is that just pie in the sky?
Unfortunately, it's not. Our approach is to look at it and assume that it is restored to its capacity. So, we take out the restrictions in our analysis of existing conditions. We're taking out the restrictions that might be due to maintenance. Now, obviously, if point repairs, if there's a collapse, we're assuming the collapse is no longer there, so it needs to be repaired, but, yeah, that doesn't solve the problem. Does not alleviate the flooding that we've identified being repetitive for you.
One more, Scott?
Yeah. Another thing, too, I mean, I look at that chart, and I, you know, just kind of doing a little math in the head, about 1.5 million could knock off eight of these projects.
That's right.
So, I don't know if that's something where, you know, when we do the prioritization, you know, do we want to take a look at those eight projects? What does that do for mitigating the flooding in these particular areas? Is that going to hit some of the hotspots? And then maybe, you know, then we, maybe we can take a different track of funding sourcing for the bigger ones.
The bigger pieces.
Yeah. I mean, you can knock off 50% of the projects with a million and a half dollars here, if that's, if these estimates are close.
And we just got a million from the state for drainage infrastructure, so, yeah.
Any thoughts on that?
Oh, well, yeah. It is common to see a prioritization. Again, this is done without necessarily your fin, funding capacity or financing capacity. We don't put years or program dollars for how long it's going to take to get it done. We're just laying out what, what steps to take if money were available to get each one of these undertaken. It's pretty common for us to come back, have be approached from a, from a community saying, all right, we've got X number of dollars, and it doesn't tackle even the first priority. What's the next best, or what do we do to best utilize?
What can we do?
Yeah. And the same thing for grants. We'll find that grants apply to certain areas more towards, than others, and so where the money comes in will sometimes dictate the best direction for you to navigate in making these improvements. And the other statement I'll make is there's, we feel there's benefits also to going through with, especially your higher priority projects, and decide whether or not you want to wait on funding all the way through construction to start, because especially on the grant arena, find that there's more competitiveness in projects that are quote-unquote shovel-ready. And so, if you get the permit, or get the design completed to a stage, they have permits in hand, then you've got a project, not just a master plan for improvements, to go out and seek grants for. You can go through and, and take a step towards, and I know it's without necessarily a resolution at the end of, in sight, but at least go ahead and get the design done, whether, you know, it could be done under phases, multiple phases, doesn't have to be done all at one time, but we see communities benefit from getting a step forward in that.
So, okay, let's take, that's a great, great advice. So, if you've got Project Three, I'll let you be overall, outfall improvements, is there a way in these schedules you could say, you know, to get to quote, the shovel-ready, the design and permitting phase, is that a million of the 12, or is that 2 million? I'm just trying to understand, you know, see where I'm going.
I do. Michael, real quick, because I think to that question, you know, because some of, some of what's on your list is FEMA grants, right?
Yes.
And I know our experience with FEMA is you can't lift a finger hardly before you find out you applied for the grant or get it, so, so I think we have to balance, you know, where the money's coming from, but, sorry, Michael.
I was just trying to figure out, is there a way to take some of these bigger projects, and have you give us the estimate of how much of the, of the dollars would it take to get to shovel-ready, and then that might help with the prioritization?
Absolutely. I think that some of it worked with Douglas already on, because those numbers are available. This is the summary of it, but there's background into each of these. That includes, call it, the soft cost, engineering and permitting and things are, are part of these numbers.
For instance, yes, with, with Priority Three, again, that $12 million project, it's called Outfall Improvements. Well, every time there's an outfall, that's, that's a discrete project, isn't it?
That it can be, absolutely.
So, you could actually just pick and choose which one of those, but it would be nice to have guidance as to which, which is the best priority to, to improve them. I know if you do drainage in the middle and not at, and not at one of the ends to start with, you end up with nothing, so.
That's why the outfalls are grouped, but you're right. It doesn't have to be done all at one time. It can be done, and we can help maybe prioritize.
And that is not in this report now?
That's what we're doing now.
Yes, right, Phase Three.
Okay. Is that, is that in the report, the prioritization, or is that what we need to do as the next step, is do that kind of study?
That's really the next step. The individual projects are identified, they're, they're located, and the concept that's used to generate this estimate, for instance, the outfalls are, generally include tide gates, piping improvements, access improvements, channel improvements, connection to the natural water bodies, and then in many cases, it also includes birmingham. And a birmingham is going to be a rather, rather complex matter, too, to decide, because right now, the berms would need to be on private property. And so, whether there's easements to be acquired, or they permanent easements, or temporary construction easements, there are several things to navigate as part of that process.
So, if we get the money, we can spend it, I guess.
Hasn't been a problem in the past. Douglas, there's, or anything else from you all?
No. I mean, I think we all understand and agree that the next step will be to bring the development, development and standards and recommendations to the planning commission, and then through the committee process, we'll start working on the prioritization, which is what we've been doing. Y'all recall, we did the several small but high-impact drainage projects, and that was our, that was our approach, looking at the most cost-effective way of bringing some relief to some areas, and it proven to be successful, and we're continuing that policy every year by budgeting funds specifically for that. So, we'll be, we'll be working on this master plan for a lot long. I think there's still some work to be done to complete the prioritization piece.
Michael, thank you to your team for work. Appreciate the, appreciate the help. Michael, just for the record, Kevin joined us about 6:20, just for your information.
New business, first two items we've talked about in workshop and previous, we just need motions and approvals. The first one is approval of repairs of the Caterpillar for debris collection in the amount of 32,000. You can see where the budgeted item is there.
So moved.
Second.
Other questions, comments? Jan?
I have a question. We've had some problems with functioning equipment with Public Works. Is this a good time for us to assess where we are with that? Not as part of this meeting, but for the Public Works Committee?
Make that happen. Yep.
That's what I'd like to ask to have done.
Other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, approval of replacement SUV for rec department in the amount of 47,573. You can see the budget amount. Any over-budgeted amount will be offset by the sale of the vehicle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Other questions, discussion items? Other questions, discussion items?
Yeah, just a point. I think we discussed this in one of our last meetings, maybe it's a committee meeting or the workshop. This recreation vehicle is used by the entire department from time to time. It's assigned to the director of recreation as a vehicle to utilize, to, I guess, take home, come, come back to work, but during the course of the day, the week, whatever, it's a, it's a pool vehicle that could be utilized by anybody that's capable and designated by the department head to use that vehicle, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, it's not, I just want to make it clear, it's not just a vehicle that's given to a department head for their personal use.
It is a vehicle that is used by the department head to come from home to work, but during the week, while it's at the department, it is used by other staff to run errands, to set up for special events, pick up food for events, so it is widely used by other, by the entire staff.
And we have a policy in place, a vehicle use policy. I think that's correct as well.
That's correct. We have in, in the employee handbook, we have a policy for vehicle use, not only by the department heads, but any, any staff member that has a vehicle owned by the city, and it establishes how many miles and how far the certain, the staff member can live and use the vehicle on a day-to-day basis.
And do all other department heads have similar use of the vehicle?
No. There are some people that have a city-owned vehicle, then take home, or they're, those that use it while they are conducting work, and there are two department heads that receive a vehicle allowance in lieu of a city-owned vehicle.
Okay. And what about city administrator?
I receive a vehicle, a vehicle allowance, as the deputy does as well.
Okay.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, C, discussion of timing of special election for the short-term rental cap referendum. When we finished our session two weeks ago, I guess, at the rec center, we kind of finished pretty quickly and didn't solidify next steps and kind of make sure everybody was on the same page, and just want to do that tonight. So, yesterday, we received the certification from the Charleston County Board of Voter Registrations and Elections, so that, that was the next biggest step to be done. Mac, I know you've looked at this, and I know there's state law that kind of guides what you do. Do you mind opining real quick, and then we can kind of have further conversation?
Sure. Yeah, as mentioned in the statute, it says the council does have discretion to hold a special election, but as I read the statute, it says, if there's no regular election scheduled within that period, that period being the 11-month period, not sooner than 30 days or longer than a year. And I believe Desiree reached out to the Election Commission as well, and they confirm that's their reading of the statute, too. So, I think because there's a regular election schedule, it will need to be held in November.
Say the last part again.
Because there is a regular election scheduled within the period of not, not sooner than 30 days or no more than a year, we would need to hold it in November.
Yeah, at the 7th, I think. Is that the right?
Yes, November 7th.
Yeah. Any questions, comments, or the thoughts? Fair enough.
Mayor, I did want to confirm.
Mayor, I did want to confirm that the question that will be placed in the ballot will be the, the question that was presented in the petition. The entire ordinance is too long to include in the ballot, so the plan that the Election Commission had put forward is have a copy of the ordinance to be handed, hand-delivered to each voter as they register. But the actual ballot will only have the question as it's read in the ordinance to limit short-term rental investment business, short-term leases licenses to 1,600. So it'll be that, that language included in the ballot, and it'll be a yea or nay vote.
Thank you. Next item, Boards and Commissions Report. Board of Zoning Appeals, no meeting in July. Planning Commission, minister attached. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, no meeting in July. Environmental Advisory Committee, minister attached. Ordinances, Resolutions and Petitions, second reading for ordinance 2023-11. To clarify, the statements of candidacy for mayor and council members can be filed at City Hall. Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
To waive reading, Scott, are you okay?
And waive reading? Second.
I can read it to you if you'd like. Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And Mayor, just, just for the record, the city staff will receive the, the statements of candidacy, and then we are required to provide an update to the Election Commission every afternoon. So we'll be doing that for the two weeks where we'll have the filing period.
Okay. And I think, I know it's on the website, August 15th to September 7th or something around those.
Correct.
Timeframes. Thank you. First reading, none. Resolutions and proclamations, Resolution 2023-07, safety resolution.
Motion to approve.
And Scott, would you waive the reading?
And waive the reading? Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That's it. Next item is executive session in accordance with South Carolina Code, Section 30-4-782 to receive legal advice protected by attorney-client privilege concerning proposed settlement of case number 2020-CP-10-04486. Council may take action on matters discussed in executive session upon returning from executive session. Need a motion.
Motion to go into executive session to discuss what you just read.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Off record, it's 6:52.